Bill, one of the numbers that I'm really eager to see, and I don't believe I saw in any of the presented materials, is what's the price per space in that garage?
There is a price per space. We are, as I recall, I mentioned in our prior discussions on this. We are currently looking at a garage that's between 730 and 810.
Per space?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Oh, total number of spaces?
Total number of spaces. And then, so the per-price space is predicated on that. I believe in the book that was furnished to you on May 15th, you will see an estimation that does break out the per-space price. It's important to note that in approaching the design of the garage, we were looking at two types of garage.
Yep.
Precast concrete and what's called post-tension. There are different construction methodologies. It has its own advantages, but post-tension is more expensive. We looked at that prospect and determined that it was too expensive. It also takes longer to construct. So we've now focused on the precast concrete. In looking at this, we have a national firm called Desmond that designs garages. And as I said in my prior testimony, it's a preliminary design. But they do have within their employ independent cost estimators. As a result of all the action taken by the council in improving the O'Connell LDA under the special legislation that was enacted, we have designated the O'Connell company to oversee the construction of the garage.
Right, and I have a question about that as well. But before we ask the price per space, I just asked for a number. I appreciate the explanation.
I don't recall.
Right, so I got the number while you were talking, and I would like to ask a question about it.
Okay.
So it's $47,000 per space. What's the expected lifespan of the garage?
We're looking at 25, 40 years. But I want to emphasize that we are not, we have not finalized that yet. We do want to come before the council on the 15th and go through those finalized numbers. Because we have had a process whereby we've had two groups estimating the cost. UC1 is the cost estimations by Kennedy Company, which is the designated contractor for the construction of the garage. And reconciling those estimates with the estimates from Desmond. So that is not a final estimate at this juncture. When we come before you again, we will have that final number.
So why would you come before us if you have final numbers? Why ask for $80 million when you don't know what you're going to spend on it? We're in the middle of a budget, we're in the middle of capital improvement plans. What's the rush? If you're not ready to present what the money's going to pay for, why are we doing this at this juncture? It seems forced, rushed.
It's not a rush, Judge, no?
No, 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 I'm not saying that. It seems a rush. If you haven't finalized, you're asking for $80 million. And this came in a month ago, the request. And I'm asking you essentially what the $80 million gets us. And you're saying, well, we haven't decided yet, we're narrowing it down. Why wouldn't you decide that and then come in and tell us how much it costs?
Because we are still at the process. There are a number of factors involved in that. We're still in the process of refining that. I would hope that you would think that it's encouraging that we do all we can to squeeze out costs to get to the best possible number we can. And that's what we will do.
I would, but so that's like saying, I do appreciate that. I want you to squeeze out all the costs, but you've already given me the bill. You already told me what the end cost is, $80 million. And you're telling me you're squeezing costs on it. So that doesn't jive with squeezing the costs up. You find out how much something costs, then you ask the council for the appropriation to pay for it. Rather than asking us for $80 million and then saying, "We're going to figure out what that's going to pay for afterwards."
We're still working on the variables as to how many spaces we will finally decide to build.
How in 2017 did we not know how many spaces are needed downtown? We've been doing this for 10 years now. How do we not know?
Well, we, through the design process, we actually have identified opportunities actually to have more spaces at a lower cost. There are trade-offs. A part of the trade-off is the design of the building, the size of the building, the height of the building. And we are still going through that process. We've also committed ourselves since it is preliminary design, and I emphasize preliminary. So the cost numbers will likewise be preliminary. But we're at a point where we need to proceed. We're at a point where we know the general range that it will cost to construct a garage. And so it is time for us to come here, particularly when the chairman has set forth a schedule that's going to allow us to finalize these numbers. It's going to allow us to reach out to the community, to get input from the community. And that's when we will have a final cost estimate.
I know, that just kind of pulls me away that this doesn't appropriate. So what's the range? The request is $80 million. What's the range that you're working with right now?
No, what we're working within is within $80 million.
Right, within $80 million. So what's the range? You said there was a range. A range isn't one number, it's the space between two numbers. So $80 million is one of the numbers. What's the other number that comprises the range?
I don't think the range will not go above 8.
Right, so what's it go down to then? What's the other number in the range?
Oh, this is, the other number within the range? We will have that number few when we come back.
What do you say, per space? Just in general, I have a request for $80 million, and you're telling me, you're trying to squeeze the costs out of it. You haven't figured out how much it's going to cost yet. I'm just asking, you said, "We're working within a range, we're going to narrow that down for you." So I just simply ask, what is the range? And you're saying the range is within $80 million. I think that's a fundamental difference we have perhaps about approaching spending of taxpayer dollars. Is that I don't say, I don't look at things and say, "Let's find a way to spend $80 million, and let's appropriate that and then figure out what it buys us." I look at what do we need, what's it cost, and then I would ask for that amount of money. This is like getting the check for dinner before you've even looked at the menu. I mean, I don't want to get bought down in that. I guess, I just thought, we're talking about range here. I'd like to know what the other number is. I didn't say range, you said.
First of all, I may, for you, Mr. Chairman, the garage portion, we went through 13 different price ups. Okay, started with subsurface utility repair.
And so we narrowed it down to two?
So we're talking, you're asking, what is the price per space?
Which, which, Roger, it's $47,000 and one of the two options that's being considered.
That's correct. But what we're giving you is a subtotal in the garage section, okay? Which speaks to a range of spaces from 720 to 810, okay? So there's, and you're going to use that as a multiplier or the divider. It's going to change the price of those. Then you have other, you know, other things that go into the garage. Obviously, the facade, each one of those are broken down. So if you're going to pro-rate, say, the facade into X amount of.
Which you would rate, I mean, counting-wise, you would?
Yeah, you would. So what we're trying to break it down to, show you the entire, you know, each feature in the garage, or each factor that goes into giving you that line. It's important to note that when you go into a preliminary plan with a garage designer, they're giving you a massing. They're giving you, as you've heard, a scope or a range, what can occur. We're looking at that range to see what is the best bang for the buck. So what we tried to do is come up with a reasonable estimation, just as when we took the diff bonding to do the roadway. We didn't know what the roadway was going to necessarily cost. We came in with a range, we came in with a basic number that we could feel comfortable before you, that that would be something that you'd say, okay, $40 million for this, this, and this. That's all we're doing.
So what is that range for the garage? What's the number for the garage?
Right now, the garage range is $46 million all in. And that is dependent on the number of, if you're using your, you know, how many spaces per garage, excuse me, how many spaces that we proposed, you would use a divider of either 720 or 810. So that's what you're getting for a range. So again, what we're saying is.
Now, are we building a garage on a Ross? We're not replacing that with a garage, are we?
We'll build, will there be garages built on the Ross side of that?
We're not, yes, not public garages, not public.
Depends, depends on what goes forth with the program over there. It depends on what is required. We've been given the numbers, you know, approximately 1 million square feet. Some of that garage space is going to be underneath the proposed buildings over there. But there'll also be first-floor retail that will need garage space as well. So there probably, and always has been intended, that there would be multiple garages, Quincy Center. You remember the old Street Works garage, 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 all over the place.
Yeah, so I think the one reason why I ask is, $46 million is the exact amount that we were told originally with the amendment through our E.P. and the costs for future infrastructure. I think it was when we took the first vote on, just probably to me, approximately $8 million sidewalks and whatnot that we did over there, the gas lines, all of the utilities. $46 million was the total number for all public parking. That included both the parking on the Hancock and the parking on the Ross. I don't believe that's accurate. I do. Well, I'm looking at the presentation from Redgate, Ms. McCain, March 2nd, 2015, Phase 3. 2019 to 2023 Ross Garage Development, Public Parking, $26 million. The page before that is Phase 2, 2017 to 2018, Hancock Lot Development and Ross Garage Service Lot. And it says, Public Parking, $20 million. The $26 million and the $20 million, which I had a note from the presentation, represented the full amount of the public parking. That was considered P1 and P2. P1 being in the Hancock lot, and P2 being on the parking lot in the Ross garage. So it was $46 million then.
So you're using the Redgate.
Jim, could you please speak into the microphone?
So you're using the Redgate model to suggest that that number that was proposed by the Redgate group, including Pam McCain?
Yeah, Quincy Center Redevelopment Opportunities dated March 2nd, 2015.
Again, it was a plan, it was a projected plan as of that time. I think what you would find, if you were to speak to, and you will here, from the garage designers, what a parking space would generally cost today. We're only using real numbers that have been sourced from two different estimators, if you will, on parking garages today. I can't speak to.
I'm going to assume that her numbers weren't pretend numbers.
I think that, I think those numbers were projections at the time that she may have thought were accurate, and she may have been using them as a preliminary placeholder for no other reason. That certainly has changed. I don't know how many spaces were included in that, I have no idea.
Those have a part on the presentation.
Well, that's my point. So what we're trying to do is give you.
No, but before you were the conclusion module, you're trying to.
Sure.
So, I mean, this is the reason why I ask, because I like to follow what you guys tell me. When you make a presentation, I like to digest it, I like to take notes, I like to mark it, and then I like to rely upon it. Because I think that's the purpose of the presentations that you guys give. It's just for us to have information to rely upon. So, and, you know, and I get that numbers change. It's not like I'm saying, because on March 2nd, 2015, the administration said it was only going to cost $46 million to cover all parking, public parking downtown, that you're held to that. I get that it changes, but it was the same number. That's why I have to use it about $46 million.
I think that's a lot of the coincidence.
Right, well, raise a flag or at least noted in my brain. $46 million, and so that's only for one of the lots now. So just tracking this on this timeline, that was March 2nd, 2015, when we said it was $46, the administration presentation said $46 million for both parking lots. Fast forward to the BSC group, Quincy Center Urban Development, Urban Revitalization Development Plan, dated June 6, 2016, another presentation before the council. And the total parking garage cost at that point was $57 million. The, and I'm trying to see, there isn't a, I don't believe there was a breakdown of what each lot was, but the total lots, so a year earlier, roughly a year earlier, it's $46 million, a year later, it's $57 million. So I'm just trying to quantify, to follow through the years, how much more expensive this garage and the different iterations of it have become. So it's $46 million for the Hancock lot. How much for the garage at the Ross?
Well, if we are going to utilize the same number of spaces, I could give you a guesstimate, but would depend on the facade, would depend on the infrastructure that leads to and from the garage on the Ross side. I don't think you're, if you're going to get a parking garage of equal scale, say, 800 spaces, you're going to be looking, if we were going to move that parking garage across the street, you're going to look at a similar number. So you'd be looking at, you know, another 40-s somewhat million dollars. I, you know, again, we're working on that number specifically with the number of spaces, an exact number of spaces, exact amenities, you know, a list of amenities, a list of what's going on around it. So again, I think these numbers were projections. Earlier numbers were projections. I have no reason to doubt that they were using this as, but I don't know frankly how many spaces there were.
So could we get, could we request that as for future information? The March 2nd, 2015 Redgate presentation, how many spaces that reflected?
Yeah, we can do that.
And the June 6, 2016 BSC group, how many spaces that reflected? The reason why, this is important, and I'm just showing you off that the numbers change.
Oh, I understand.
But the reason why it's important to me is because both these presentations were used to justify requests at the time for an initial stage of funding, right? So I mean, it's all broken down into phases, right?
An initial stage of design?
No, 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 initial phase of funding. I mean, you only, you guys don't come to us because you like our opinion about design. You come to us because we appropriate the money that you're seeing. So Phase 1, from the, again, 2015 Redgate presentation, Phase 1 was the $8 million for utilities, streetscape, and placemaking activities. We authorized that to move, I believe, West Chestnut forward and the stuff over on that block. So the point is, you guys give us projections and numbers, and I'm not going to hold you to the, you know, right to the exact number, because I get that things change a year later, a year later. We're now, you know, two, three years from this presentation. But every time we get a presentation, it's to justify, you're giving us the long-term view of what the costs are, to justify a request on the front end, right? So in 2015, it was said it was for the $8 million. I forget what it was in 2016, what the funding was for at that point. But now it's for the $80 million. There's more costs that are going to come later on. And so I have a presentation here tonight, and it projects what the costs are later on. But every time we vote on the today cost, the tomorrow cost goes up and the next time money is sought for the downtown development.
I appreciate what you're saying. What I'm trying to also respond to is, we're trying to compare apples to oranges, where maybe it isn't as easy to do so. What we're trying to put before you.
But you're the guy selling the fruit. And so if you give me apples one day, and you give me oranges the next day, you can't then blame that, well, you're comparing apples to oranges. Then just give me apples every time, and I'll compare it straight up, right? And I'll compare the number of spaces. You guys chose not to give us, in the Redgate presentation, the number of spaces that included. You guys chose not to give us, in the BSC group presentation, the number of spaces. So I get that it might be difficult to quantify why those numbers are different, but from someone sitting here and concerned about protecting the taxpayer money, my fiduciary obligation to the taxpayer, I want to know why the numbers are changing. I mean, that's what he's saying.
And again, I have no, I have no means in which to give you a level of comfort if I can't explain what I'm trying to explain. It's today's dollars, today's design, this is what the price ups are. Now, I could go back to the Redgate numbers, and we could identify the numbers that were plugged in. Those numbers were in fact estimations by professionals that came before us.
As Mr. Geary said, today's number is an estimation, because you don't have a final number.
It is, it is a range though. And here, Mr. Geary is telling you that there's either 720 spaces or 810. There's a range there. And it's a dimensional reasoning, because you have a box, it's this big, you squeeze it this much, you know, you have.
But apples to apples, that box has always been the same size for the past 10 years.
No, it's not.
It's not?
The number of spaces has been the same size?
No, the number of spaces keep changing. But you're telling me it's a box, it's the same box. The Hancock lot has not changed size, not that year.
I'm talking about the box on the Hancock lot. The box on the Hancock lot is a parking garage. The parking garage may have X amount of levels. It may be above ground, then it may be below ground. The specifics that we're putting before this council, it's important to point out, is for a specific preliminary design. And that preliminary design calls for some underground spaces and for a certain scale. And then what you basically can do is go into the total number for the issues or the items that are listed in Number 6 on the bond activities. And basically see what that money is going to purchase in today's dollars. This is an actual design, preliminary design. Everything else that was put before you, counselor, as you know, and you view it as a specific number that I can tie back to. I don't believe that's accurate, but I mean, we can have that conversation. What I think is important to say, we've got two.
I have no idea what you're saying.
Well, I have two independent, I have two independent depreizes, okay? That we are playing against each other, if you will, to learn what the cost of this garage. As you heard earlier, we looked at one type of garage that was far more expensive. So now what we've gotten down to from the generalities of it is either a post-tension garage or a concrete slab garage, which is what we have proposed, and that's what we're going forward with. So we're pricing up a specific product within a specific dimension. And then, once we create that product, we can give you a range between X and Y. When we get a final GMP, guaranteed maximum price, which we will get from the developer, we'll give you a real, this is what it's costing, per space. To speak to Redgate's work was a preliminary job that cost X amount of dollars to kind of put us into how to go about becoming the master developer. And that's what everybody here saw, and especially yourself. Not everybody, because they all weren't here. So Redgate gave us an idea. What would you do now? And for instance, to compare back to a plan that was developed by Streetworks, we've been able to move off of that. Streetworks had different models, different plans, any number of parking spaces. You really can't compare to that. Redgate, all they were doing is trying to give you an overall massive, that massive plan.
That was to get our buy-in, but that was, again, this.
That is all the information we can provide you. There's no way that you can get.
Then stop giving us numbers if we can't rely on the numbers. That's what I would say. If we can rely on the numbers, then give it to us. But every time you give me a new number, I'm going to compare it to the last number you gave me, and the number you gave me before the time for that. I'm going to ask you what's different about it. And it's not inflation, because.
No, and no one is up here saying inflation.
These, you know, what you said, today's dollars versus 2015 dollars. The phases have dates on it. So Phase 2 says 2017 to 2018, $20 million for a public parking garage. I relied upon that number in 2015 when I took a vote. I want to know why I can't rely on it now. It's saying it's $20 million, and it's putting a date on it. So why would it not be $2017-2018? The next page is Phase 3, 2019 to 2023, $26 million for the P2 structure, parking garage, where the Ross garage was. I would presume that when someone's giving me a number based in the future, that they're assuming it's future dollars, not today dollars. Otherwise, the numbers.
Well, that's not, that's an assumption that you can make. But what I'm giving you are numbers that are developed today with cost estimators in both products, in both the post-tension garage, the slab garage. Different dimensions. We can break it down to an exact number as we go forward. But, counselor, it's difficult for me to suggest to you that a general massing study done by Redgate has a level of specificity that you would be accepting if we gave before you that and said, "Give us the," or "Vote X amount of dollars for a parking garage." And that's all we're trying to say.
And I get that, but when you gave me that number for the parking garage, you did have me vote on the first one. So there's like 20 votes, okay? Say there's 20 votes. The first one needs to happen, so you give me the numbers for the other 92. So it's almost like, I mean, I don't mean this to be hard, like a bait and switch though, when the numbers could change it. Because every vote forward, every vote forward carries the fate of the previous votes. Okay, that's been my experience up there. It's, well, you voted for the LDA with Streetworks. Now they need 22 liquor licenses downtown. If you don't vote for the liquor licenses downtown, the whole thing falls apart. So we voted for the LDA for LBC, we voted for the LDA for O'Connell, and now this is going to be $80 million diff. If you don't vote for this, the whole thing falls apart, everything you did. Every vote carries the fate, every vote forward carries the fate of the votes passed. So when I'm looking at my votes passed and what I relied upon, when I voted for $8 million, or when I voted on $8 million of infrastructural improvements, I was told the next phase was X amount for a parking garage. Now, after you get my vote for the $8 million for the infrastructure, now we're on the next vote, which is the parking garage, and that number's changed. So I relied upon that parking garage number when I gave you the, when the body voted for the $8 million. It's, so I don't mean to be harsh by saying this, but I can't think of another term. It's like a bait and switch. It's like, we're going to show you a smaller number to keep reeling you in on getting these votes out of you. And then, would you do a bigger number and say, "Well, you have to vote for this, because the whole thing falls apart if you don't?"
Counselor, here. The projections from 2015 or 2016 were just that, projections. As Mr. Fatsy said, the numbers that we're bringing before you now are the most recent numbers developed by two different estimators, and they reflect today's market value. There's not one member of this council that doesn't appreciate the fact that in the last two or three years, the market price for construction services has dramatically increased, dramatically increased, because there wasn't a casino going up in effort in 1920, 2015. And so we made the best effort we can possibly make to give the council, at the time we appeared before the council, to request an appropriation, the best figures we have available. That's what we have here. To keep referring back to what may have been the projection in 2015 is not a worthy service of the time for this council, because we've all realized that prices go up in time.
With all due respect, I got elected by the voters of Ward 4 to sit in this chair, and as long as I'm sitting here, I will be the determiner of what the representative from Ward 4 deems a worthy exercise for the board. a worthy exercise for the body, in terms of when I have the microphone. So until they cut me off and drag me away, this is what we're gonna talk about. So whether or not you think it's worthy of this body to discuss that, I do. And so we're gonna discuss-
Well, you've asked a question, we've answered the question. We have no further answers to provide beyond the answers we have provided. And it's all in the circular exercise to continue to-
Well, that's a rude, I agree that to be a rude statement, Mr. Gary, that's fine. If you have no further answers, then stop talking about it. And I'll move on and ask other questions. But I think that's incredibly rude to say it's circular.
It's not rude. We've had this discussion for a period of time. We've asked the question, we have provided you with our best answers. We don't have any better answers.
So why don't I, so how about I just move the question then? We're not gonna continue engagement. How about I move the question, and we just take a vote on it? Because I'll vote against, I'll tell you that right now. I'm a no vote right now. Based on that response, that I'm wasting your time and you refuse to answer the question? Because you don't deem them to be a worthy exercise for the body? I'm sorry. I disagree strongly with that, Mr. Gary. And before I lose my temper, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the microphone back over to the chairman. But I'll leave you with this, and it has nothing to do with the fact that I think you disappointed me, because I think you do a very good job in what you do, and I think Mr. Tremontosi does a good job. And I was gonna close with this either way, but I don't see why we would use borrowed money to pay salaries. I would have no problem with you guys coming over on the city payroll, but I have a hard time using borrowed money to pay salaries. I think you're providing a benefit to the city in the role that you play. I think Mr. Tremontosi plays a very important role, provides significant benefit, and you're worth the money we pay you. But I don't know that you're worth the interest on that money. So I would pay you, I would vote to pay you what we pay you in the budget, but I have a hard time doing it in the debt. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor, before I normalize that one, I have to clarify what was that? What were the two reports that you were asking, Mark? There were dates attached.
March 2nd, 2015, and June 6th, 2016.
Thank you, Councillor Gary. Before we go to Councilman Fenn, as you know, this council has dealt with a lot of spending matters in front of us in the last month, so you're starting to see that emerge up and out. And we stand for, and I'm gonna, you know, back most of what my colleague over here said. This is real money, eighty million dollars. It's not monopoly money, it's eighty million dollars. So when we come here, or the way that it was presented to me, let's have a hearing, we wanna talk through, just so everyone's clear on this body. As your chairman, I plan to, you know, provide for him to have these discussions that will get his grandolos and his niggas in time. My thought was, by having an initial presentation tonight, you know, would allow us some time to kind of step back and process, you know, ask questions and interact. But I hear and identify with the frustration coming on of Councilman Muji, because it's not the third inning anymore in this conversation. It's not the third inning. So we don't need a version of the vision. We don't need the version of the vision, we need the vision. That's where we're at. So completely, you know, see the frustration as I kind down by it, and hopefully some good comes out of this dialogue here this evening with that Councilman.
Again, Mr. Gary, I think a few of the things that are coming up by respected colleagues here that raise some questions that I just wanted to sort of clarify. First and foremost, what we're being asked to vote on is bond authorization, because it's toward a point in time. So if that bond is authorized, I, in relation to this project, I have authorized millions and millions of dollars, of which we've never spent a penny to this point. Is that inaccurate? Of which, what? I said that we've authorized, since I've been up here, that I mean, millions and millions of dollars in relation to bond capacity, of which we never spent a penny moving this to a project forward. But this, even if we were to move forward next week and authorize this bond, that means you're still coming back and forth with the so-called garage proposal.
We'll come back with the final design of the garage?
Right, which under the land disposition agreement, we have to approve.
Correct.
So theoretically or hypothetically speaking, if any of the councillors have any really mistrust or have any reason to believe that those are really not good projections or accurate, one could clearly vote against it in terms of that garage, and therefore not be spending any of the bond dollars that we're authorizing the seat for next week. So again, I, we cannot put it back on you in some regards that if we keep moving it down the field here based on what we did in the past, we have to do it based on those proposals. And so if people don't have faith, or whenever you come back and it's that garage proposal, we can vote against that. And then you're back to the drawing board and need to come back.
Correct.
The only other thing is, with the Red Gate, I've been having difficulty. Today, we haven't spent any dollars related to actual parking at this point.
I'm, I'm-
So what we were really paying for, I think, with the Red Gate proposal was around three hundred thousand dollars. It was around conceptual components. In terms of, if I remember, and again, believe me, I'm struggling with memory here, but if I remember correctly, what it was really about was trying to show the shift that was occurring in our development model that was ranging from a, and again, I really oppose the continued use of this word "master developer," so to speak, because that model was based on a single entity having all the capital necessary to buy up the whole field. We're not doing that. All we have to work with are these public lots and the certificates of consistency are things that we've put together to encourage people to follow a life manner. But Red Gate was purely conceptual, what they were presenting.
So my understanding is-
And so, so in terms of the numbers even that they were presenting as it relates to parking, it's likely that they were looking at facade and the structure and were not having adept to a point in time to deal with the infrastructure costs associated with that as well, perhaps. I don't know.
I presume that to be true.
So again, I think to the extent that you can give back, you know, some clarification of those numbers, particularly as it relates to this space, would be helpful. But I do want to, no one on this body should, if they believe that if we get to a proposal that comes through related to that parking garage, pass it if they think that those numbers are flawed. I mean, in terms of fiduciary responsibility, that's at this point. But when we do these bond authorizations, it's always based on estimates, to a certain extent.
That is, that's where my experience is on my end.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gary.
Councillor Muji?
Through you, if I could, to Councillor Fenn. So I'm not trying to put you on the defensive here, but I wanna, I wanna tease out some of the information you said. So what you're telling me is that it'd be a secondary, almost confirmatory vote for the specific cost of an item? So hypothetically, we approve an eighty million dollar bond authorization. And then what I took from what you just said, and this is why I'm asking correctly if I'm wrong, there'd be that confirmatory vote sometime thereafter for the garage expense?
So Mr. President, so Councillor Muji, is that one of the conditions that we worked into our land disposition agreement associated with that is that any cost in terms of the design of the plan that comes through, we have, the city council has a vote on that. So that if we voted against it, the project's dead.
Regardless of how much.
Right. Again, remember, when we talk about a bond authorization, all we're doing is setting a capacity. For example, I mean, we passed a bond authorization for the Streetworks that was like close to half a billion dollars. We never spent a penny on it. Because we didn't move forward.
Two hundred and eighty cents.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, right. Well, no, actually, the numbers that they presented, the second one, was the three hundred and forty-two thousand. So I mean, again, you know, nonetheless, significant numbers. But again, we never spent anything on it. I think the point I'm trying to make is that, that specifically, if there's questions around the methodology of reaching the point of the cost of that garage, we are certainly in a position to look at that very closely, because if you vote no, that means, again, there'd have to be a situation going back to the drawing board. That wouldn't change the bond authorization, but it would certainly, you know, again, create a situation where they'd have to answer those questions.
But they would still, but the administration would still have the ability to borrow eighty million dollars?
Well, again, but not to approve the forty-something necessarily that they're spending on the parking garage without the approval of this body. That's my understanding of the land disposition agreement that we signed onto. That at each level of these things, I mean, we have certain, I mean, by way of analogy, for example, we still have these takings in front of us. If at some point they have to come back, and this body voted against those takings, that would dramatically alter or change the direction of the plan as well. But all of these things, this has been structured where they have to come back. This is so different than the Streetworks thing, because I think that was what we were dealing, what I was wrestling with, even coming to an understanding of the land disposition agreement for that project, it was a sequential number of things that have to happen in order to make the whole thing work. And the way we have structured it is that each one of those points, this body still retains some authority or control over what essentially amounts to expenditures of that-
Well, that's, I mean, that's important, that's certainly valuable. And like I pointed that out, I don't think I have a full understanding of that. Because I look at, historically, looking back, there was the original 2007, which I think we were here with, that bond authorization, that was prior to me coming aboard. And then that bond authorization, which was a diff bond, was used in a variety of ways that weren't even contemplated by the council in 2007.
Well, I think that that's where, I think that, and I don't know, do we have the order of the bond language in front of us? Because I think that that's the thing that we have the power, we're within our power to amend. If you think that there's certain things, I mean, again, I raised a whole host of issues I had in 2010, and I think it's all, it's very important that, for the sake of, I hate using this word, transparency, this council needs to monitor those expenditures and let people know what's happening. Because I think there are a few things within the context of that bond that, and again, I don't want to overrate it, not because the numbers were not that significant, but things that were questionable. And again, part of that, I think, was because of this, of the engagement as well with Streetworks in a certain way that resulted in some of those things. But again, I think the language of the bond, for example, we take the salary positions. Back in 2010, I raised a lot of, heck about that at the time, and, but, and the truth of the matter was, is that, you know, I have to check it with the Department of Revenue through the auditor, and really a close look. They basically said that they were well within the language of the bond that they crafted to do that.
Very broad language.
Exactly. So I think to the extent that there's things that we would want to restrict or do whatever, then we'd address that through the language of the order.
Okay. All right, thank you. Very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make sure we pull that down before next meeting, so I can lay it around. So again, we're gonna go into this more next week. You know, use this time in between to interact with this period and project team, ask you questions. I have a list of stuff that, you know, I'll dig up and speculate around, but you have a little more over the week. So at this point, we're gonna blow this finance committee, and that people will like.